I don't see Heberline's pileup.
Yeah, he's also not in the chat.
I had just stepped away.
Yeah, he's probably not a panelist.
Just admitted Commissioner Heberline as a panelist.
All right, now I'm here.
You finally learned that secret handshake, did you?
Well, yeah, I think Miranda decided to make me a low D.
You've been demoted.
Yeah, yeah, as should have been the case all along, but hey, I'm here anyways.
You said it.
Now, we have quorum, so you could start whenever you want. Miranda?
Am I starting the meeting?
Are we ready?
I'm not the chair of this meeting.
No, are we ready?
Oh, yes, we are ready. Yes, we are.
All right.
It's been a kind of a day.
Yes, it has.
Oh, boy.
Ms. Penney, could we have the roll call?
Chair, Mesba.
Not chair yet. Uh, yes, here.
Still chair, I thought until the election. Okay, sorry about that. Olive Gallagher, here. Jennifer Willard, Ron Heberline. Brian Tocinski, Ben Woods.
Here.
And welcome, Andrew Carr.
He here.
Thank you.
Now to the issue of chair. I was asked to be a temporary chair until we have elections of officers, and I accepted pending the consent of the commission. So are any of the commissioners opposed to me temporarily chairing until we have elected?
No. By the way, I don't know if you see that Commissioner Tocinski is, oh, there she is.
Sorry, my, for some reason, my link wasn't working, and I wasn't able to get in with my video, so I'm here.
None of us were panelists. We all had to be admitted as panelists.
Yeah, I tried logging in, logging out. It was a whole thing. Glad to be here, though.
We are glad to have you. Well, what I started with Commissioner Tocinski was, and Commissioner Willard now welcome, is that I was asked to do temporary chair. I accepted with the consent of the commission. Is there any objection? You two just joined. Do you have any objection? Very well. So now we will stand and be led by staff in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic, the free, which is founded under God, and the nation that is invisible, which is just for all.
Thank you. Citizens input, this is the time that citizens have the opportunity to address the Planning Commission regarding any item that is not already scheduled for a formal public hearing tonight, and we do not have any public hearings tonight. Therefore, if any member of the audience, either here in City Hall or via Zoom, would like to speak about any work session item or any other matter of concern, please raise your hand and send, or send a message to the recorder using the Zoom chat function so that we may hear from you now. Do we have any patients?
Commissioner Mesba, I do not see anyone via chat, and there is no one here at City Hall.
Very well then. Thank you. We will move on. Introduction of new Planning Commission member, Andrew Carr. Miranda, are you going to start that, or how do you want to do this?
Yeah, I would be happy to start that. So Commissioner Carr, this is a tradition that we have here at Planning Commission, is we like to welcome our new members and go around the dais, or in this case, the virtual dais of Zoom, and share, have each commissioner just share a little bit of their background and how long they've lived in Wilsonville, and what interested them in joining and volunteering with the Planning Commission, and then give you an opportunity to do so as well. I know many in this virtual room know Mr. Carr, because you have been a longtime volunteer with the city. This is not your first volunteer position. Commissioner Carr joins us after having served on the Development Review Board as well as the Budget Committee, so pretty well-versed in the city and the different opportunities. And I know he's also participated in the Civics Academy and had a good briefing there and found himself very interested in Planning Commission. And we were obviously excited about his resume and experience and his dedication to the community, and we just want to say welcome and thank you. We love the volunteers who join us on this Planning Commission, and we definitely rely on you and enjoy the insights that you provide on the work that the Planning Division does here for the city. So with that, I guess I will leave it to Commissioner Mesba to call out maybe the order for commissioners to go around the dais, since we're not sitting in a row in chambers together.
I'll do that. Let me start with Commissioner Carr to say a few words about his interest in itself.
Yes, thank you. So about the only thing to add to that is I've lived here for 19 years. But yeah, started with the DRB, moved on to the Budget Committee. While on the Budget Committee, did the Citizens Academy. Started looking for my next volunteer gig from that, which I loved the Citizens Academy. I thought that was fabulous. And Planning Commission seemed to be a really nice flow, especially having previously been on the DRB. DRB kind of applies the policies and procedures. The Planning Commission builds them, or at least recommends how they're built. So it seemed like a natural progression, and I'm a longtime resident, and I like to see how the city is going to expand and grow, and I would like to be part of that vision. Thank you.
What professional background do you bring?
I worked for a software company that's in the construction vertical, and prior to even that, and I've been in that, for that company for 25 years, prior to that, I worked for a company that was in the construction vertical, so well-versed in construction and plan reading and all that, all the good stuff that goes along with that, materials, et cetera.
Wonderful. We welcome you to a round, round of rainstorm that we have created here. Commissioner Gallagher, do you want to go next?
Oh, sure. Hi, welcome aboard. This is my second year as a commissioner. Prior to this, I served on the Enhancement Committee, and prior to that, I participated in the Citizens Academy after moving to Wilsonville from Lake Oswego in 2017. I came to Oregon in 2013 after 40 years in California. My first career was as a recording artist and performer in show business, in the music business, and then I founded my company, Personal Best, in 1985. I'm an ethicist, and I work as an executive coach and consultant to both executives and individuals, and generally spend my time on Zoom today in private practice. And I welcome you aboard.
Commissioner Woods?
Yes, well, Commissioner Carr, let me see here. I don't think I know you too well. Commissioner Carr and I have a long history. We spent time together on the DRB. Wonderful time. When he rolled off as chair, I rolled on as chair, and all I can say is welcome. You know my background. You know how long I've been here. It's 26 years now, and I think you know I retired from Xerox in 2020. But at any rate, I know Andrew Carr, and I'm so happy to be working with you again. Always good input, and I look forward to the coming months.
Commissioner Tocinski?
Just to preface, if you hear a grinding noise in the background, I gave my dog a bone to be quiet during this section, but he decided right next to me that place needs to be. So, hi, welcome to the Planning Commission. I've been on it for about two years now. I've been in Wilsonville for about four years, but I grew up just in Stafford, just north here, so I'm super familiar with the town. My background is in real estate, and I'm a real estate appraiser, and I joined because I am a younger person who wants to shape the town to be the best place to live for the next 20 or 30 years. So, welcome.
I think you and I met at the Citizens Academy.
Yes, we did. I thought you looked familiar. Okay.
Commissioner Heberline?
Yes, welcome, Andrew. Nice to see you again. Andrew and I have known each other for a while. I've been, I was on DRB before this for a three-year stint. I've been on Planning Commission for four years now, which is crazy to think about, but time flies when you're having fun. And I work in the aerospace industry as a Director of Engineering.
And you are, and you are our new commissioner as well. You got re-upped for another term, right?
Uh, I guess, yeah. I think that's true.
Commissioner Willard?
Hello, everyone. Hello, Andrew. Jennifer Willard. I have been on, this is going into my third year, I believe, if I haven't lost track. COVID years go differently than non-COVID years, so I think this is entering my third year on the Planning Commission, and I was on the Development Review Board before that. What prompted me to join and get involved was a lot of the divisiveness of the recent elections, both local, you know, and national, and so I thought I need to start getting involved, and this seemed like a good place to use my talents and my knowledge and my skill sets. I am also in the construction industry. I'm passionate about digital transformation in construction, so you and I should talk. I work at Intel, and I'm currently an engineering manager on the design side for construction, and, but I've, I've been there for over 20 years, so I've done many roles there in the years.
It's funny that you say digital transformation, because that's a tagline. I worked for Trimble.
Oh, okay.
No, I, I worked for a company called Viewpoint, but we were acquired by Trimble, so now I say I work for Trimble. But yeah, that's our, that's one of our taglines is digital transformation, so.
Yeah, it's awesome. Well, software, when you said software, you had me at software in construction.
Right.
Wonderful. And I moved to Wilsonville, to Oregon, then Wilsonville, in 2015, end of 2015, and have been on the commission for six years, I think, now. Next year will be my last year. And my background is in urban and environmental planning, and regional planning, and environmental psychology, and in civil environmental engineering. And my interest is in community building, in all the aspects of it, including social sense of community, as well as infrastructure and so forth, which is why I thought of the Planning Commission as a good place to volunteer my time. And once I'm termed out, I need to figure out what, what is my next volunteer opportunity, just like you have been looking, Andrew. So I have a couple of years to think about that. And with that, I think we are done with the introductions.
Thank you, everyone.
And I, we go to the election of the officers for this year, and I pass the floor on to our Assistant Corp Counsel, Ryan Adams.
Right. At this time, the Planning Commission will elect a chair and vice chair subject to the following rules. We will begin with the nominations for the position of Chair of the Planning Commission. Any member of the commission can nominate someone for chair. You can nominate yourself. Nominations do not have to be seconded. If you are nominated but do not want the position, simply state you decline the nomination. When the nominations stop, the chair will call for any more nominations. When no more nominations are forthcoming, the chair will declare the nominations closed. Once nominations are closed, I will read the names of the nominees and direct the recorder to proceed with a roll call vote for each respective nominee. If one person receives a majority vote, the chair will declare the result of the vote. If no one receives a majority of the vote, we will redo the roll call until one person receives a majority of the vote. No nominee may be dropped unless that person voluntarily withdraws from consideration. Upon completion of the election of the chair, we will then elect the vice chair in the same manner, by first-nominated candidates, then closing nominations, voting until one person receives a majority of the votes, and then the chair declaring the result. All right, so this is the same way we did it last year. It's a little different than how we did it when we were in person. But Chair, I'll hand it back to you.
So the question that was raised last year, when we did it also on Zoom, I think I asked, how come we are not going to the second person who was nominated? And you said because the first person got the majority vote. And that implies that whoever votes for the first nominee is not voting for the second nominee, even if the second nominee is brought up. Is that correct, Ryan?
I think that's what we did last year. Are you, so basically, like, if you vote the first time, you're saying your vote counts for that. If it doesn't count for the second time, is that what I'm understanding?
Well, no, you didn't vote for the second time, the second vote, because the first, the first nominee got majority vote. And I guess what I was, I was saying, maybe the second nominee will get a higher vote. And you said, well, no, we already have a majority. Well, we don't need to go to the second nominee. And so when I was thinking about it, the confusion was, well, if we started with the second nominee, maybe they would get a majority vote too. I don't know how, how that works, but however it works, I'm fine with it. I just was confused last year, which is why I brought it up.
So, you know, I'm happy to, to kind of do it however we would, however you feel would be fair. I think the way we did it last year worked fine, unless anybody has any objections, and Miranda, obviously, feel free to give input here if you'd like.
I didn't hear any objections last year. I was just confused. But we are, I, I will put it to the commission. Are we fine with the way it's outlined?
We like you, we like you.
Very good. I'll stay confused.
Okay. In a nutshell, though, it's, it's each commissioner gets one vote, and you get to pick from the nominees. Correct?
Yeah.
So you see, that if, if we were in person and we were casting the paper ballots, that would be the case. But the way we do it on Zoom is, they say so-and-so has been nominated. Who votes for them? And whoever votes for them says, A. And whoever votes for them says, hey. So therefore, well, once that first nominee gets a majority vote, then you don't go to any other nominee. Because you already have somebody who got the vote. And what I was thinking was, well, unless somebody got absolutely all the votes, the second nominee, if they were up, could get more votes. So in other words, compared to the first nominee, they may have a more majority. But we didn't get to that. So that was the reason why I was saying, now, wait a minute. Why didn't we go to the second? We are, I'm fine with, I, I'm fine living with my confusion. Don't worry about it.
Well, as I recall, last year, there was not a majority. I, I recall that it was a unanimous vote. So I don't, I don't think there was any issues. And I will say, I hope that this is the last time we have to do this over Zoom, because it's.
You all hope that.
So, so correction. Last year wasn't a unanimous vote, because I didn't vote for myself.
Okay, okay.
Do you want to talk about that now, or should we do it privately?
No, no, I'm, I'm fine. I, like I said, I can live with my confusion. I open the floor for, for nomination for the Chair.
I would like to nominate, oh, sorry. I would like to nominate Commissioner Ron Heberline.
We have, we have a nomination for Commissioner Heberline. Is there any other nomination?
Yes, I'd like to nominate Commissioner Mesba.
We have Commissioner Woods nominating me. Do we have any other nominations? During none, I close the nomination for Chair. Okay, Mr. Adams, how do you want to go about doing this?
So I would say that Robert's rules isn't exactly clear on how we do this over Zoom, Zoom. So I think, you know, if, if it's your call as Chair, I think if we wanted to put Commissioner Heberline up for the first, that'd be fine. I would entertain the option of flipping a coin, whatever you guys feel more comfortable with.
Raise your right hand for one and your left hand for the other.
Right.
Is this the Super Bowl of Commissioners, or?
Where's the puppy go to first?
I am, I am fine with Commissioner Heberline going first.
Okay, okay. So Ms. Binyer, do you want to take a roll call vote?
This is the vote to, for the vote for Ron Heberline as 2022 Planning Commission Chair.
Yes.
Olive Gallagher.
I don't know. Be gentle with me. I know with this.
We have a question from Commissioner Woods.
Yeah, so if you're voting for him, then you would say yes, I'm assuming. But if you're not voting for him, then, and your name is called, then what do you say? No?
Well, we have, we have I don't know as an option here. It seems like.
I think that's synonymous with abstain, but.
Is that abstain?
Okay.
I, I find this very uncomfortable.
And this is what I was saying. This is the source of my confusion now coming. You know, I'm happy that it's happening, actually. Go, go for it. Who's next on the roll call?
Oh, Commissioner Gallagher, then. Is that an abstain?
Uh, for now, yes.
Okay. Jennifer Willard.
Yes.
Cameron Mesba.
Yes.
Ron Heberline.
Wow.
Brian Tosinski?
Yes.
Aaron Woods.
No.
Andrew Carr.
Yes.
I have a vote of four in favor, two opposed, and one abstention.
Is that majority, Mr. Adams?
Yes, I believe it is.
So he is Chair, right?
I, I believe we have a Chair.
Yes, it is, yes. Exactly.
And he voted no.
Say it again.
So can we take a vote over never doing this over Zoom again?
Yes.
I second that motion first, right.
Well, next year, next year, when we come back, we'll have the, we'll have the paper ballots again. And that makes this a lot less confrontational and uncomfortable. So I apologize.
It wasn't confrontational. This was just confusing. I'm happy to share my confusion with everybody.
Me, too.
Commissioner Heberline, do you have the Chair gavel?
Oh, great. With no training whatsoever. So I guess now we move to.
Into the deep end.
For Vice Chair.
Oh, dear.
Are you, are you asking for nominations? Okay. I'm going to nominate Commissioner Carr.
I'm going to nominate Commissioner Woods.
Uh, I decline.
I'm going to nominate Commissioner Mesba.
And I'm going to nominate Commissioner Willard. Now we'll.
So the problem is the queen doesn't have three sides. So we've kind of gotten rid of that option.
Chair's choice.
I will decline then.
Well, this is fun.
Hey, so now we are down to Commissioner Willard. And who else?
Mesba.
Commissioner Mesba. All right, okay.
Can I get a clarification on, I, I apologize. It was fast and serious. But who nominated Commissioner Willard?
I did.
Okay, thank you. So I have, for the record, I have Commissioner Carr nominated, excuse me, Commissioner Woods nominated Commissioner Carr, Commissioner Willard nominated Aaron Woods, who declined. Commissioner Tosinski nominated Commissioner Mesba. And then Commissioner Mesba nominated Commissioner Willard. And then, then who declined? Oh, Commissioner Carr then declined, correct?
And Commissioner Woods.
Oh, yes, I did have him declined, but then also Commissioner Carr. So we have Commissioner Mesba nominating. And, okay, I think that was the only one I missed. Thank you.
All right. I propose that we open the voting for Commissioner Willard.
All right, so this is for the voting for, I'm sorry, who did you want to take first Chair? I apologize.
Commissioner Willard.
Commissioner Willard. Okay, so for Vice Chair, voting. Andrew Carr.
Yes.
Aaron Woods.
Yes.
Brian Tosinski. Yeah. Ron Heberline.
Yes.
Chair Mesba, or Cameron Mesba.
Yes.
If I have it. Jennifer Willard.
Yes. What the heck?
And Olive Gallagher.
Yes.
We have unanimous as Jennifer Willard for the 2022 Planning Commission Vice Chair.
I had Vice Chair last year, and it's a very easy gig. Especially with such reputable Chairs that we have that do such a good job and have such a.
But you did it so well.
Yeah, watch out. We'll, we'll see how this Chair does. Okay, so that closes the nominations of Chair and Vice Chair. Next on the agenda is the consideration of the December 8, 2021 Planning Commission minutes. Are there any Commissioners that have any changes to the minutes? Being none, the minutes are approved as submitted. Next, we will move to the work session. First work session agenda item, or only first agenda item, is the Frog Pond East and South Master Plan. Ms. Bates Show, would you like to introduce the Planning Manager?
Yes, I would. Thank you, Chair Heberline. I'm going to have to train myself to have a new name that goes with Chair as well. Thank you for being Chair for the last couple of years, Commissioner Mesba. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Here, here.
So, yeah, tonight, we have a big agenda item, even though we only have one item. I think you will find yourselves with a lot to discuss this evening as we move forward in the Frog Pond East and South Master Planning Project. This is not your first work session, so it does not need a lengthy introduction. And we have spent some time with Commissioner Carr getting him up to speed on the project. This, as you know, we have the Frog Pond area plan that, that the concept plan for West, East, and South. The master plan was only for Frog Pond West because East and South was not in the urban growth boundary at the time. Since then, that land has been added to the urban growth boundary. And the city is now planning for East and South in alignment with the requirements of that annexation or that adjustment of the UGB, and also in line with new state law. The team's been working hard. They introduced the topic of affordable housing to you at the last time they met with you. Had some initial questions for you and direction. There's a lot more work that's been provided in your packet this evening about that analysis. And I'm excited to have the team share that with you and for us to have a robust policy discussion about that housing. And then the team will introduce you to a couple other topics we'll get some initial direction on. But the bulk of tonight will be about something we've been talking a lot about over the last few years, housing and planning for needed housing in the community. So we look forward to your discussion, your astute observations and questions, as always. With that, I'll hand it over to Daniel Polly, Planning Manager, who is the Project Manager for this project. And he'll introduce the team that he has with him this evening.
Thank you, Ms. Bates Show, and welcome Commissioners and Chair Heberline. I, I recall, let me first introduce the team we have with us tonight. So from city staff, Kim Ribold, Senior Planner, who's done a lot of housing work. Led the project on Eco Housing Strategic Plan. He's used a lot of housing-related work with the city. Appreciate her being here. Also, Georgia McAllister, who's doing a lot of great work with the project as well as here. From the project team, we have, we have Joe Dills with Angelo Planning Group, as well as Becky Hewitt with Echo Northwest. And then Chris Zahus and Sam Brookham from, sorry, my brain's, I know their company very well.
Leland Consulting.
Thank you.
You're so much better.
I should have prefaced, just for everybody to know, I should have prefaced that Mr. Polly is feeling a little under the weather. And he is being a superstar by still joining us via Zoom, in a certain time nonetheless, to lead us through this important discussion. So if he is a little foggy-headed at times, it is for very good reason, and we will support him through it.
Yeah, so if I forget things, thank you. The team's prepped to support me, so thank you. Also, I note that I recall last February was our longest work session with Middle Housing. We're not, the goal is not to be that long tonight, but do I acknowledge, I mean, there's a lot, a pretty hefty packet the Commissioners had and a lot to discuss. So look forward to having a great discussion with you tonight. Let me go ahead and share the presentation here. So you'll see this pattern emerging during our work sessions of things that we're kind of following up, getting more detailed feedback on versus things that we're kind of kicking off and getting initial feedback on that we'll come back and do more detail on in the future. And so tonight, as Ms. Bates Show mentioned, we will look in detail at a lot of the housing questions that we've been talking about, including around affordable housing and accessory dwelling units. And then following that discussion, we'll kick off the discussion about the Neighborhood Commercial Center Evaluation, which is part of the scope of the master plan, and get your initial feedback there. I'll also share some other brief project updates. Though I think all of our brains may be tired by that point, but we'll, I think they'll be updates that you'll be interested in. So let's, I get into the Affordable Housing Analysis, which is in your packet. Let me get a drink of water here. Couple things I really would like to stress as we move into this, and as discussed in the staff report and the memo, is this is really building upon the Eco Housing Strategic Plan that that adopted back in June 2020, that that was really a key step in the city's housing history. And this is part of the implementation and action directed by that plan. Something that is specifically mentioned about the, the action related to Frog Pond East and South is that the affordable housing actions here need to be reasonably achievable. And I think that's a key discussion that we'll be turning back to. Housing is a complex issue. A lot of, there's a housing crisis in the state. There's unmet needs, unmet wants in the community, in the region, in the state, and broader. And we'll talk through how, you know, it, maybe not every goal that we want to met is achievable in Frog, in Frog Pond East and South. We can't solve all of our problems in Frog Pond East and South. So it'll be important conversation, see what is reasonably achievable? What is the target that should, we should be looking at and recommending that the action, the direction City Council takes? And so this analysis brings a lot of thought and, and analysis to help decision-makers make a housing target that's, affordable housing target for Frog Pond East and South that is reasonably achievable. It really is, though, again, part of a multi-pronged approach and one of a variety of actions in the Eco Housing Strategic Plan, and a number of which are ongoing. Just to mention briefly, we have ongoing efforts around a vertical housing tax credit that Commissioners are pretty familiar with, as well as working on potential development of a, of a housing development on land owned by the city next to the Smart Station on the other side of town. So those are, and then a number of other efforts that have occurred, such as the Middle Housing Project and others that are forthcoming. So just keep in mind that this is among a package that we're doing that cumulatively, trying to make an important difference in the, in the area of housing in the community. So with that, let me actually go back here. I wanted to allow other team members, including Joe, Becky, Kim, maybe starting with Kim, to add anything else that really is on top of their minds as we dive into this topic tonight.
Hi there. Kim Ribold, Senior Planner. I don't know that I necessarily have anything to add. I think you've covered it very well. I do think that the context is important here in Frog Pond East and South, and recognizing that this is a unique place with a unique set of characteristics that makes some aspects of affordable housing development more feasible than others. I think Becky's presentation and her packet materials will go into that a little more. But we're certainly happy to answer, as you get into your discussion, any questions you have about some more of the nuances, about what makes this area in particular different than other parts of the city and other opportunities we may have.
Thank you, Becky.
Nothing to add right now, Dan. Thank you.
Thanks, Joe.
Uh, no, nothing to add right now. We should, to move ahead into, into the memo.
Okay, great. So one, thank you, guys. So one thing that. So one thing that we really want to focus on is for the housing targets for households making less than 80% of the median family income. There's a council goal, one of the council's goals, is really focused on affordable homeownership. And that will be integrated into the target. Review, as you remember, as you review the memo and the information, there's a discussion we had about balancing those ownership opportunities with rental, and especially the short term because of things such as funding opportunities and barriers to ownership outside the city's control. So some barriers that specifically to consider is for lower-cost ownership opportunities are around qualifying for mortgages, especially at 60% and less of MFI. And also, the built form that would typically be more affordable for households, such as condos and co-op housing, have a number of legal risks and financing challenges that make them less likely, barriers to them being built by developers. So with this in mind, another aspect of this is there's opportunities for some short-term projects to go after, funding and financing short-term projects. But also, as we talk about this, keeping in mind that this, we're talking a 10- to 20-year build-out. So as we talk through this, also making sure we're providing opportunities for programs or developments that maybe we're not thinking about right now, that could come to fruition in, let's say, year 13 or 15 of the build-out. So really balancing those short-term projects that may be key opportunities now, as well as long-term possibilities. So any comments about that from the project team at this point?
And I think if there are questions on some of these pieces about the, you know, the funding opportunities for affordable rental housing versus affordable homeownership and some of the barriers to affordable homeownership and lower-cost market rate homeownership opportunities, I think we can certainly talk more about those if folks do have questions about those conditions.
And we certainly can. Thank you, Becky. And with that, I think Becky, I'll go ahead and turn it over to you, if I can run the slides, if you just want to, until we went to advanced. And I'll turn it over to Becky to talk more about what we've learned from the Affordable Housing Analysis and...
Sure. Thanks, Dan. So Becky Hewitt, Senior Project Manager at Echo Northwest. I think I spoke with many of you, maybe not all of you, a couple months ago, so pleasure to be back with you. So the slide that Dan's showing now is a just sort of summary of our initial recommendation for Council, I'm sorry, for Planning Commission consideration of what we think would be some reasonably achievable targets for government-supported housing in this area. So keeping in mind some of the factors that Dan mentioned, that although we do provide a lot of subsidies for homeownership generally through things like the mortgage interest tax deduction, that the funding for new construction of affordable housing primarily goes to affordable rental housing and primarily multifamily affordable rental housing. So the opportunity for the largest amount of affordable housing in this area would be something like a multifamily rental development serving households at 60% of median family income or below. There are opportunities to do some kind of mixed income through income averaging under the rules for the most common funding sources. And this would typically be something that's on about four to six acres and provides about 120 to 180 units of housing. That would fit with the most common form of public funding available for affordable housing development. And so if there was a site that an affordable housing developer was able to obtain in this area, their odds would be fairly good that they could deliver this kind of housing, potentially even without additional financial support from the city, because the other state and federal funding sources are more broadly available. And the next one down on the list, smaller, maybe cottage cluster, tiny homes, courtyard housing type of development, a little smaller scale, that could be anywhere from just like five units up to about 50 units, something smaller like that, might serve a more kind of targeted population, either very low-income households, low-income seniors, veterans, people with disabilities, et cetera. Still generally going to be rental housing. There are fewer sources of subsidies for this type of development. Some of the ones that are available are highly competitive. So this is a little bit more of a reach or an aspirational target, and having financial support available from the city, something like grants or loans, would increase the likelihood that this type of development would be possible in this area, so that if there was, you know, if they weren't able to put together state or federal funding and they were trying to piece together sort of smaller amounts of money, it might still be possible at least to get a few units. And then the bottom row there, trying to get one to two affordable homeownership developments, likely in the form of townhomes or cottage clusters, something like that, that might serve first-time homeowners generally earning less than 80% of median family income. That might be maybe 10 to 40 units at most, so not a huge development, but could still be an important component. That would probably be something like a nonprofit developer, like Habitat for Humanity. They rely on sweat equity and donations to help close the gap between the costs and what their families that they work with can afford, because there is limited funding at the state and federal level for this type of development. But for this type of development, getting access to land at low cost and limiting the infrastructure costs that are imposed on those housing units is particularly helpful to make it work. Kim or Dan, was there anything you wanted to add on that, or should I keep going? These examples we actually shared last time, but we thought it would be helpful to just give folks kind of a picture of what those different options might look like, a sense of the scale and what kind of thing we might be talking about. You can see on the left is pretty typical for affordable rental housing development. In the middle is an example, like, these are kind of all over the place, but in one example of kind of an affordable cottage cluster rental housing development. And on the right, an example of affordable homeownership in the form of townhouses. Next slide. And then thinking about the market rate component of the housing, based on both the prior work for the area plan and our review of the pricing of recent single-family townhouses and other types of housing and apartments in the area, we think it's reasonable to have about half of the units that are not income restricted be affordable to households earning less than 120% of median family income. So generally in that 80 to 120% of median family income range, and the balance would be affordable only for households earning more than 120% of median family income. So we would expect medium and large lot detached housing to be in that category of affordable only for households earning more than 120% of median family income. And things like middle housing, maybe some small lot detached housing and multifamily, either apartments or condominiums. Again, market rate construction of any of those things, we would expect generally to be affordable to households earning less than 120% of median family income. And then in terms of thinking about how to get there, we've laid out some strategies that build on what's in the Equitable Housing Strategic Plan and tried to give a sense of what might have the greatest impact for this area. Zoning for all housing types is at the top of the list because it doesn't cost the city anything, and it really expands the opportunities for affordable housing development in this area to have potential for a lot more units of affordable housing. The next step is acquiring land for affordable housing, because having site control gives the city the ability to dedicate land, know it will be specifically used for affordable housing development, and gives the city the opportunity to write down the land cost that they're charging to the affordable housing developer. But even if the city can't fully absorb the cost of the land, just having it, having the ability to determine who gets to build on that property is still a pretty big deal. And then in addition to that, waiving, reducing, or deferring SDCs for the affordable housing, that can be very helpful, reduce the amount of other subsidy needed, affects some types of affordable housing more than others, but that is very helpful. Partnering with a community land trust could be a good fit here to support affordable homeownership particularly, and again, particularly if the thing that you can contribute to the community land trust is the land, that would give them a really good head start. And then incentivizing smaller and lower-cost middle housing, because of the amount of middle housing you could see in this area, having some of that come in the form of smaller units that might provide lower-cost homeownership opportunities, maybe some lower-cost rental housing options with little or no public subsidy is another way to expand the range of housing options in this area. On a similar note, encouraging ADUs can also expand options for lower-cost housing within a single-family context. The ADUs can be a lot of different things. They can be sold separately from the main home, they could be rented out, long-term or short-term, and sometimes they're used by the household, the same household living in the main house, as a place for extended family or guests, or to allow for multi-generational living. So it's an important component of this strategy for the area, but there are limits to how many ADUs might realistically be built in the area, and it may be that they won't all be used as separate, independent, long-term housing, because there are a few other options for them. So this one is important, but it may have a little bit less impact than things like encouraging smaller middle housing units, because those would be all kind of managed, or those would all be separate units. And then reducing multifamily parking requirements is one that's included in the Equitable Housing Strategic Plan and could play a complementary role here, but only if multifamily housing is allowed and its impact is kind of at the margin. And then incentivizing accessible and visitable units is another one that can help provide housing that may not necessarily be, it doesn't necessarily make it more affordable, but it makes it usable for a wider range of households that may have few other housing options. And with that, I think we're ready to go to questions and discussion from the Commissioners. And Joe, I think, were you going to facilitate the discussion?
No, tradition would have it that we sort of pose the question, then the chair will facilitate the discussion. I can provide a little bit of a preamble here. Becky's presentation sort of focuses on some of the conclusions and implications of those. As you saw in the memo materials, there's a lot of background looking at what types of housing serve what types of incomes. I think that's important to keep in part of the context here, what the housing mix would be if the area plan was developed as it's been drawn to date, and other helpful kinds of things. So the questions we're posing here do get to the affordable housing targets. Does this sound like the right direction? Do you think it's reasonably achievable? What questions do you have about it? And what are your thoughts on the appropriate balance of ownership and rental? Chair Heberline, that's what I would put out as the first discussion group, and turn it over to you to manage the thoughts around the Commission.
Thank you, Mr. Dills. Let's go ahead and get started. I'm just going to go around in the order that I see it on my screen. So Commissioner Gallagher, looks like Commissioner Gallagher has a... All right, Commissioner Szazinski, why don't you start us off?
So I have kind of two separate questions. One has to do with kind of condos, and the other has to do with ADUs. So what do you guys want to start with? All right, let's start with condos. So going back a couple of slides, there was kind of the breakdown of what kind of the target residential... That's it. Go back one more. There it is. So I was just curious why for first-time homeowners, it's more townhomes and cottage clusters versus condos? Just purely out of curiosity, why that's kind of driven that way?
Good question. So there are a lot of reasons in there. So among them are issues related to condominiums and construction defect liability. So there's, folks in the construction industry are probably familiar with this. It was interesting to hear you all give your backgrounds, so I think for some of you, this is familiar. But condominiums face greater legal risk from construction defects, and so that's a challenge for condominium development generally, whether it's for first-time homeowners or whoever. Also, just being able to stay within residential building code. So Habitat does build condo development in some very high-cost markets, like in the Bay Area. But in the Portland region and in the Portland kind of suburbs, their housing is predominantly townhouse style. They do some detached, but townhouse is kind of their most common form. And then there are other models, land trust models. Again, you do see some occasionally get into condominium, but it's much less common, and the complexities of doing the condominium with the community land trust, there's just more layers of complexity there. So the kind of small detached or smaller attached housing that stays within a residential building code tends to have a lower construction cost, less legal risk, and it's a little, you know, depending on the scale of the project, to, you know, works better if you have kind of scattered small sites.
Okay, and then switching gears entirely to ADUs, sorry. So my question is for ADUs. You mentioned that some of them can be sold separately. What kind of ownership does that look like? Is it, I mean, if it's an ADU, is that a segment of the land that they own underneath them? Is it not that entirely? What about ones that are maybe attached to the original structure? If you could just kind of speak on some of the ownership things there, I would really appreciate that.
Yeah, I can take that one real quick. So as part of the middle housing, the middle housing code updates we just did, we allowed for middle housing land divisions to include ADUs, so that you could divide off a portion of the lot and sell the underlying, a portion of the underlying land with an ADU. So that's one, if it's detached or attached, where you can actually separate it with the underlying land. You could also do a condo-type scenario if it is interior... You could also do a condo-type scenario if it is interior or otherwise makes more sense. But probably generally you'd see that middle housing land division type approach because again for the rest.
Okay, so just for my edification, like there's some, in Villebois, there's some brownstone type units that have kind of an ADU at the bottom of the structure. How does that land division work if they were to sell that separately?
So the middle housing land divisions only work for like, for vertical, or sorry, for horizontal division.
Okay.
So for vertical, you'd really have to go with the condo-type division.
Okay. Okay, and then is that part of the deed going forward, is that like a condo or an easement style, or how does that convey to a future owner?
So it'd be, if it's like condo, then yeah, it'd be conveyed like a condo to a future owner.
But the original owner...
Middle housing land division would be more like a traditional property transfer.
So the original owner then would be the owner, okay. So it would be essentially if the original owner of someone with a basement ADU were to sell that ADU, it would be considered a condo, but it would be some kind of easement scenario for ownership purposes?
There'd certainly be some easements involved.
Okay.
I haven't gone into, you know, drafting one up in detail within a term year.
Okay. Sorry, I know that's kind of a weird question, but...
There definitely are complexities to it.
Yeah, it's kind of a brain twister for people that have to talk about conveyances. So, okay, I think I kind of got it.
In some cases, you would just create basically a condominium association with a condo for the main house and a condo for the ADU. So they would become like a two-unit condominium association. If it's like a block of townhouses and all of the units are being sold as condominiums, it might be a larger condominium association, but they would basically be, you know, a two-unit or a three-unit condo association and function like a condo in that case.
Okay, I'm just coming at it from like how a lender would want, would figure that out, you know, loan for someone buying that property, because it kind of is a little tenuous in my mind, but...
It would be probably more complicated than buying just, you know, if it was a land division and you had your own lot. But it's not necessarily more complicated than buying a condo and a condo tower. Sort of, you know, a different physical form, but the form of ownership and all of the, you know, shared pieces and individual pieces is the same structure as you'd have for another type of condominium development. If it is condo ownership and as Dan said, if it's a detached ADU, you can have an actual land division and own the land itself.
Okay. Okay, I think I got it.
Commissioner Suzinski, based on that, any feedback on the two topics identified on this one?
I think it's the right direction. Obviously, our initial idea was to have more affordable housing, and I would like to see a lot more, lower income, not, I don't know if lower income housing is the right word, but I would like it to be more affordable certainly than Rock Pond West. But yeah, I support pursuing these strategies. I think I need to study up a little bit more on the ADUs and kind of how that conveys, but everything else sounds good to me going forward.
Mr. Mezba.
Mr. Chairman, I like the direction. I read the analysis with interest and at some depth. I think it provides a factual kind of outline of the parameters and constraints that we're dealing with in that neighborhood to have a lot more of what we were hoping to see. But as I was reading, I was also having to remind myself that that neighborhood is on the edge of Wilsonville, and I constantly keep thinking about how accessible it is or is not. And that with all the kind of work that we did in the town center neighborhood redesign and all the kind of units that we are hoping to see there, that that would probably be a much better place for some of these, the kind of more affordable units that we are looking for. Not that Rock Pond is not a good place for it. I'm saying that what I see, the analysis showing is what we can do there feasibly, and I like the mix of approaches, and I would like to find a way to encourage the city to move with policies and programs that allows it to be more active in doing some of the stuff that is being proposed here, but the city is not quite able there yet with its infrastructure to make possible. I think this neighborhood should be used as a springboard for the city to get to that level of being able to buy land and give it to land trusts so that they can develop and/or other approaches that are being proposed here, some of which the city doesn't currently do or hasn't done historically. I think it's getting bigger, it's, these are growing pains, in my mind anyway, and I'm hoping the city will use this as an opportunity to expand its capabilities. The strategies outlined are pretty comprehensible and I like that. The balance with rental opportunities, I read in the paper, I think, the, some of the discussion at City Council, wanting ownership, and that's fine, I wasn't sure if that meant no rental. I still think that since the analysis clearly is showing that the affordability of units and housing, access to housing is facilitated with rental units much more readily than ownership, we, I'm not sure we can rule out rental completely from this neighborhood. I hope we don't, because that seems to be the only hope for some people at the lower income levels. So all in all, I'm happy with what I'm seeing and I look forward to how it expands and evolves and develops.
Commissioner Willard.
Yeah, I've been looking over the report and what was discussed here tonight, and just trying to reconcile several of the images and graphs that were provided. I assume you don't have Exhibit 14 on your PowerPoint that you could go to?
I don't, but I can bring up that in the report.
No, that's fine. That's fine, I just wanted to, you know, the slide prior that shows the, what was the terminology used, I took a screenshot, the targeted number of developments? You know, when you actually lay it out in the Exhibit 14 and the other one, it's a very small percentage, it seems, less than 15% of the houses offered are being hit with these targeted developments, is the way I'm reading it, that the rest, the balance, the 85% would be high-income over 120 and middle-income, which would be in that 80 to 120 range, which is not in this table. Is that, am I reading that correctly?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, so, yeah, I think that was just a little bit of a surprise to me that it's such a small portion of the housing that'll be offered. And seeing in Exhibit 15 what the gap is, you know, it doesn't seem to be addressing the gap very aggressively.
I think that gets back to that multi-pronged approach and, you know, what's reasonably achievable. I mean, that is an excellent observation, and that is something, I kind of, something that came out of the data that we're getting and the thoughtfulness that's going into this, that I don't think was expected to the level that you're conveying, that really, you know, we can't, the level of that we can really make a change or make an impact out here is fairly mild, even with a fairly aggressive program. But again, it's part of a multi-pronged approach, and I think it becomes a lot stronger when you imagine it as kind of part of a snowball effect with other projects around the city.
Mm-hmm. I do like how that these graphs are indicating that a lot of middle housing could be offered, which really does, in hope, free up some of the low-income that's occupied currently for different households. So I do see that. So, yeah, I think, I'm looking forward to seeing more and learning more really from you all, so, and from these reports, because a lot of these concepts are new, and like you said, since they're multi-pronged, they can be quite complex.
Commissioner Willard.
Mr. Woods? Yeah, you know, I would, I was looking at the chart that Commissioner Willard was looking at, and, you know, first of all, I want to commend the team for what they've done, because this is really a tough situation. There's a lot of variety that has been brought for us to look at. We can see the balance here, and it's a tough balance to get affordability for those low-income homes, or excuse me, individuals. So when I look at this, first off, the affordable housing target, yes, I do think it's, of course, the right direction. Reasonably achievable? I'm not sure. I'm a little bit skeptical about that when I look at this. You know, one of the things that I'll say is the appropriate balance of ownership and rental opportunities, you know, that's one of the things from last time, we weren't sure about the rental opportunities, but I think it's what has already been said, how will we achieve or get to that balance without having some rental homes here, you know, as a part of this? I think, I think we have to have that, and I'm one, I'm not against that. One of the areas that, I don't know if we'll talk about that in more in-depth, but, you know, this whole ideal of land trust, and I don't know, I got a question that maybe someone can answer. Do we have any places here in the city that are governed by a land trust currently?
I'm not familiar with any.
Okay.
Do you know, I don't think there's any.
No, I don't think there's any.
Okay, all right. Because when you look at the land trust, to me, that is one way of getting lower-income people into homeownership for those that want that relatively early. So I'd really like to look at that a little bit more. From the affordable housing strategies, you have provided, I think, or done a very good job with the different strategies, and you've also brought to the forefront the difficulty of trying to achieve some of these strategies. We really, really are going to have to dig deep here to figure out how and what we think are the best ways to approach this. So from my perspective, I think you're moving along in the right direction. I don't think I have any additional guidance for you, except to say that we all are going to have to really look at this for what you have presented and decide, or at least make recommendations, I should say, on what we think is the best approach for this.
Thank you, Commissioner Woods. Commissioner Carr.
Thank you, Chairman Heberlein. When I'm, when I look at the materials, and again, great, great analysis going on, especially Exhibit 14, and I compare that to the Equitable Housing Strategic Plan, that there was one graph in there at page seven where it talked about what the future households by MFI will look like, and it seems to me that the distribution of housing for these projects is heavily weighted on the high side. And, you know, the distribution of need is only 49% in that area, meaning 55% is in the lower. And I think that's going to have us leaning towards some type of low-income, median-income, whether they be apartment complexes or townhouses, cottages, et cetera. I think we're going to have to have a focus, especially with the fact that West is almost exclusively geared towards that mid and high. I think that's kind of where we're trending. My, one thought that I have though is we can't just have segments of this development that are, that are isolated in and amongst themselves by income bracket. We need to have it in a fashion that we allow some intermixing of those housing types to facilitate process, income, interaction. I do like some of the things that have been presented as far as, you know, especially in the area where we've got, talk about the commercial segment, right? And you could kind of build a circle from that commercial area, and maybe you start out with some of those rental units, and then as you got further away from the commercial, you tended more towards the large lots. I kind of like, I kind of like the way that was done. The land trust, are there any current limitations in our code that is preventing land trust, or is it just something that's never been taken advantage of?
I'm not, I can't think of anything in our code, Commissioner Carr, that would specifically limit them. I think there's other barriers in terms of financing and controlling land that really, my understanding is driving it. The other team have additional thoughts, sir?
I would agree with that, but I think land trust, and it's possible that the land trust that operates in the Portland metro region, they may own some individual homes within Wilsonville, that's possible. But yeah, as Dan said, it's not as much an issue of regulatory barriers as just opportunity to acquire property and having the funding available to do so.
And then what kind of complications slash discouraging with HUD housing have we seen in the past in Wilson? Do we have any, do we have existing HUD housing in... Do we have any, do we have existing HUD housing in, in Wilsonville now?
There's certainly a supply of, um, uh, regulated affordable rental housing in Wilsonville today. There are a number of existing, um, Kim may know the specifics, um, better than I do, but there is certainly existing regulated affordable housing. I'm not sure if that's what you're referring to in terms of HUD housing, but, um, funding that's received, or housing that's received funding through HUD. Um, yes, there definitely is some existing, um, affordable rental housing that has received state and federal funding in Wilsonville, but, um, Kim, I don't know if you want to add anything onto that?
I don't have the number off the top of my head, although I want to say it's somewhere between four and five hundred units. Uh, we do have a table in Equitable Housing Strategic Plan that actually calls out the specific, uh, complexes and the number of units that are provided in need. But I want to say it's somewhere in that four hundred to five hundred range. Don't, don't quote me on that. I can actually, um, if, if you're curious, I can try to look up a reference to that and provide some clarification.
And, and is it scattered? This is a bad word, but kind of scattered around the city, not just centralized?
Uh, yeah, there, there's some, there's a few different projects that are integrated into Villaboa. Uh, there are a couple of others that are along Wilsonville Road, uh, in that area, a couple of projects adjacent to East Jother. Um, and then, so I think it's mostly on the western side. There is, um, Creekside Woods over across from City Hall has some units as well, but I think the majority of them are on the western half of Wilsonville.
Okay, so if, if we considered it on the eastern side, we wouldn't be overwhelming one side of the city?
Okay, right.
Those are my, those are my primary, but yeah, I think we're, we're definitely looking at this the right way. Um, I like the analysis. There's obviously more thought that I need to put into this, um, but I like that current When we consider the, the, the EHSP as part of this, yes.
Great, thank you, Commissioner Carr. Excellent, uh, first, uh, comments on, uh, on your tenure here. Very good. Um, I don't see Commissioner Gallagher on anymore, so I'll, uh, I'll go into, to some of my thoughts. One thing, you know, I, I was looking at the, at the report and Exhibit 15 was, was the one that really stuck out to me, um, you know, looking at the proposed target in comparison to the need gap, um, and also to the city distribution. Um, as it stands right now, it's, it's fourteen percent, so about a hundred and eighty-five homes out of the required thirteen hundred and twenty-five, um, would be, uh, you know, affordable. Um, I wonder if that's enough. I wonder if, if we are, if we have made an aggressive enough goal. Um, that's, that's one thing that I, I am curious about. Um, one other thing that I was, I was curious about as, as we were going through this is, you know, the city distribution is, is really a snapshot of, you know, all the housing inventory and, and is covered, you know, multiple decades of growth. I would be curious to see what the subset of the city distribution is in Villaboa, to get an idea for how that, I'll say, very recent development looks. Um, because for me, that is, is at least in Wilsonville, kind of a goalpost of, of what I see as a, a mixed development. You know, we have the high income, we have some of the middle income, but what I'm not sure about is how much of it we have, um, on the lower side. So I would like to be able to see that to, to kind of gauge, um, what Frog Pond East and South might look like, uh, because I, you know, I've spent a lot of time in Villaboa, um, you know, whether it be as, as part of DRB or just as, you know, being a resident here. Um, and, and I see that as, as a, a reasonable amount, but I just want to see it in the numbers to, to really understand it and get a better gauge for what I think we might be able to hit. Um, you know, I, I wonder twenty-five percent seems like maybe too much, three hundred and thirty-one units, um, but I wonder if, if twenty percent is achievable. Um, and so I guess that, that's a question to the, to the team. What was driving it down to, to fourteen percent? And what were the conversations, uh, around it being higher and what the pitfalls would be with that?
I would, I would start out that one of the biggest is, is the fact of, uh, of, of land acquisition and land control and the feasibility of, first of all, if the city can get out ahead and acquire land, uh, to assist, or the ability for a nonprofit or other affordable housing developer to compete in the open marketplace, uh, with, uh, market rate developers. I think that's, that's a big one right there. Uh, and the fact that green, that developing newer urban areas, infrastructure costs are quite steep as well. Uh, so besides land costs, you have, construction costs are quite high, which is a barrier as well.
I would add, um, and this is by no means a sci- scientific survey of, um, various inclusionary zoning policies, which is one tool, uh, some municipalities will use to, uh, provide either incentive or requirement for affordable housing. Uh, in Oregon, that's typically used for multifamily development. Um, in examples, I've seen typically those requirements range anywhere from ten percent to twenty with, I mean, I, I think as you start getting to the twenty to twenty-five percent, that starts to be seen as fairly aggressive. Um, so I, I don't know that the overall percentage is actually that far off from how some of those programs typically, um, are run. Um, and so also just as a side note, I did look at the number of, uh, government subsidized units that we have in the city and it's four forty-nine.
Um, and yeah, I think, uh, as Dan said, the, um, the fourteen percent is something that's, uh, A, not intended as a precise number at this stage, because, partly because the previous plan and the thirteen twenty-five envisioned no multifamily, so the total of number of units would probably be higher if you did have some multifamily affordable housing here. So it's not necessarily exactly thirteen twenty-five anymore, but that, that's sort of a, a minor point. Um, but the, the number, um, the targets that we showed on the, um, a couple of slides before this, um, that's how we sort of backed into what was an achievable goal here, is thinking about, okay, you could, you could plausibly get one, um, kind of typical multifamily rental project here. That's honestly, uh, the, the goals feel both, um, very ambitious and not very ambitious to me at the same time from, from the work that we've done. They're very ambitious in the sense that the city would, as, as multiple of you have pointed out, have to make some moves that the city does not have a history of making, um, particularly in a greenfield area that is in private ownership. Villaboa is a different situation because of the, um, starting out as public ownership. Um, but, uh, so it would require the city to be, to, to act very differently than it has in the past. Um, and at the same time, you know, trying to get like one affordable development of this kind and one of that kind, it feels like it would both be a win, um, you know, a, a real feat for the city to do that. There is, you know, as, as one of the reference points of the, you know, what's in the area plan shows, it is not a foregone conclusion that you will get any affordable housing development here. And a do-nothing approach probably results in zero affordable units below eighty percent of median family income. You know, the affordable housing developers are, you know, there's a chance somebody would be able to make it work on their own with no help from the city, but it's just not very likely. Um, so I think that, um, the, the target and that, you know, roughly fourteen percent is about what I think you could get to if the city did make some moves that were, you know, different from how it's operated in the past in this type of situation, but still within the realm of what cities about Wilsonville's size can do, have done, you know, it, it's, it's plausible for a city like Wilsonville to do some of these things, even though they're new. Um, and so that target, I think, is ambitious on some levels and, you know, if the city was, like, had a track record of doing some of these things, like City of Bend, um, has a full, you know, housing program, they've got all sorts of things, they've got local funds, and they are, um, in a position to deliver, you know, more affordable housing than this on a new growth area because it's coming from public ownership and because they worked it out. Um, but that's a, like, a, a city with an advanced housing program and land, they're starting with site control coming from the state and that's sort of an unusual situation. So I think this set of targets for Wilsonville may not feel like it, it's really hitting as much as you would want, but I think it is, it would be a real success, given the conditions, to actually hit those targets for this area. I think that would be, um, it would, it would take some work and I think that the city could be proud of having done that because it isn't, it isn't going to be easy and it isn't, um, it isn't something that the city could just sort of sit back and let it happen.
Great, I appreciate that, that additional context, that's really, really helpful. Um, you know, to, to answer this specific question, it's the right direction, I think it's, I think it's in the right direction. Obviously, based on my comments, I'd, I'd like to see more if we could make it happen. Um, but I also want to make sure that it's something that's achievable. Um, but if, if we're going to err on one side or the other, I'd rather err on the side of trying to get a little more, so that even if we do fall short, we get to this. Um, you know, so that, that's, that's where I would, I would prefer to go. Um, the balance on ownership and rental opportunities, I think the rentals are important. I, you know, based on what we saw in, in the report, this doesn't happen without rentals. Um, so, you know, for us to have any meaningful, um, you know, affordable housing, there's going to have to be rental as part of that strategy. Uh, on the strategies themselves, um, I support these strategies. I really like the idea of land acquisition being, you know, one of those high priority things, um, because it does give the city control, although it's a new thing for, for the city. Um, but I'd be excited to, to see that be, be something that we proceed forward with. Um, and then that parking, um, reductions is on the low side. Um, you know, having, having been in Wilsonville for, for ten years and, and heard about some of the challenges and concerns around parking and around parking, around multifamily housing, um, the idea of making that problem even worse is, um, concerning, uh, and so is something that we would have to tread very carefully on. Uh, so that's, uh, that's my take.
Mr. Chair, can I, uh, add a word or two?
Please.
Um, as I've been listening to, uh, my fellow commissioners, there used to be a time in the old days, in my old days, I mean, before World War Two, when cities and villages acquired land and developed housing and other things on their own. We have privatized that whole process, which is why now we, we see all this analysis that says, is it marketable? How is the market going to respond and all that? The city buying land is a great idea. I think the time for that, however, would have been before this area came into the urban boundary, because once it's in urban boundary, the prices go through the rules because everybody knows it's going to get developed. Um, so, and I don't even know if that's legal in, uh, in the state of Oregon for a city to own land outside of its, uh, corporate boundary. At any rate, I think the city of Wilsonville needs an affordable housing program. We have a strategy, we do not have a program. And I don't know if, uh, it's worthwhile to spend, I don't know, a presentation of fifteen or twenty minutes by staff at one of our meetings, telling us what would be the requirement of setting up a housing program, staff-wise, budget-wise, all of those things. Some cities and villages apparently have it. Um, Wilsonville doesn't, and I think, uh, from what I'm hearing, it is handicapped in many ways in achieving an affordable housing strategy because it doesn't have a program to implement it. Uh, so my question of staff at some point, and I guess, you know, it is for future, um, is, so what are we talking about? What did we take? How can we encourage the council to move in that direction?
That's great, Commissioner. Well, thank you. Commissioner Carr?
Thank you, Chairman. Um, as we look at some of the, you know, the highest priority to lowest priority, it's kind of that one in the middle, the wave reducer defer SDCs, uh, on the income restricted. What, what kind of an impact would that have on the affordability of those units? How, how much of an impact is, is the SDCs in the overall bill?
That can have a, a pretty large impact. Uh, I think we'll be learning more about that in the coming months as we dig into that deeper. Uh, uh, but certainly that's something that, uh, just the initial financing and initial outlay, it is, it can be, especially in these new urban areas, is substantial chunk of money. But also you got to build the infrastructure in particular, so, I mean...
Right, and then, yeah, and then, and then if it's a big reduction, how do we build the infrastructure, right?
Right.
And I think just to, two things just to add on to that one is that, um, it doesn't, for income restrictive housing, which is what we were recommending, um, you know, reducing or waiving SDCs for it, wouldn't change the affordability of the housing per se, it would reduce the other subsidy needed to deliver it. So the price that, you know, or rent that the, the household would pay doesn't change, but it reduces the gap between what they can afford and what the actual cost is.
Right.
Um, and, um, as, as Dan said, that's going to be a subject of some further exploration to kind of look at the interplay between the affordability, um, strategies and the, and the, um, infrastructure financing strategies.
Yes, no, I, I understand that. I used to, I used to, in a previous life, manage HUD buildings as well, so, I know that process.
Joe?
Um, I wanted to, to comment on, as you, as you wind up this part of the agenda discussion, uh, a look ahead on our next work. Uh, when we come back in April, the discussion will be around, um, crafting, uh, the initial thoughts on alternatives, plural. So we have a range of housing programs that we'll be looking at. We're going to do that in combination with additional information on commercial and some of our base mapping and, and initial design ideas. But, um, I wanted to mention that because I think that provides the opportunity to look at the affordable housing, um, pipes in combination with the strategies that are in this report. Um, and the important thing is the approaches and not the exact specific numbers of each of the housing components. And so it may be that we, we have some alternatives that look at a range between fourteen and twenty percent of the total housing. So I just wanted to put that out there, that the team is assuming that leeway, one. And then secondly, um, I took note of the comment about, um, how there's interest in affordable housing being integrated into the total housing form of the area. And I, I just wanted to underline that as a, as a very important planning strategy. You, you don't want the only tall buildings, uh, to be the affordable ones. You want to have some market rate too, uh, so that, you know, under the best case, uh, you sort of can't tell which is which, or at least there's, there's a combination of them. So those are the ideas that we'll be bringing back for your discussion when we do it in the context of alternatives in April.
Great, thank you for that, Joe. And I, I, I did, I, I realized when he said that, I didn't make, uh, make a comment around that, and I think that idea of, of integrating the, the housing types is, is critical to the look and, and general, uh, feeling of the neighborhood. Um, so I think that's really good. One last... One last thing that, that I thought about, um, on the slide where there has the, the target development and the housing types, um, Becky, when you were talking, talking through this, one thing I, I realized is that, or it sounded like, for us to be able to be successful on any of these, there is something that the city is going to need to do differently to help make that, to facilitate these things happening. And I wonder, A, is that, was, is my interpretation correct, and, and if so, would it make sense for the presentation to council to, to define that in a, a fourth, fifth column? Um, to kind of, to at least show, because when I looked at this, I said, oh, okay, well, this, this is what the, you know, what the proposal was. But the, the thought that it's something that the city needs to do differently to be able to enable that is, is a very key part of it in my mind.
Thank you, yeah, that is, um, I would say, um, some of these things are hypothetically possible with no action by the city, the bottom two rows, you know, the city doesn't allow multifamily, doesn't give any money, doesn't acquire any land, doesn't waive any SDCs, they are hypothetically possible, they're just not very likely. Um, the top one would be not even allowed, um, under the, the area plan, um, land use plans. Um, so I, I think that pointing out what is needed to make them possible and then to make them more likely, there are a range of strategies the city could use to make any of these things more likely, doesn't have to be land acquisition, that's just a great way to get there if you can do it. Um, but I think the, it's a, it's sort of a question of going from a probability that's, like, very small to a probability that's very high, or a probability that's at least somewhere in the middle, um, depending on, on which strategies the city would implement and, and to what extent.
Okay, yeah, so it definitely sounds like something that could use, uh, more discussion with, with council to be able at least talk through that, so that, you know, because I didn't realize it until, until we had the follow-on conversation, that, that it was critically important that the city do something to facilitate that, um, and not just make it as a, it's a possibility, but what do we need to do to make it a certainty? All right.
So Chair, I know we're, we're over an hour, talked about it, which is, I think, you know, fine, I mean, we've had some good conversation here, uh, there are a few other things, uh, we wanted to go through, I think, go through a lot quicker, much quicker, um, but maybe a good time for break, or we can cover accessory dwelling units real quick, maybe before having a break and transitioning to commercial for a bit.
I'm okay with continuing. Thumbs up from the rest of the commissioners? I'm getting a general thumbs up, let's do it.
Okay, so, uh, accessory dwelling units, we kind of talked about this, especially around Commissioner Tzuzinski's questions, we've already touched on this, um, and Becky, I think I'll have you add, but I'm gonna go ahead and just go through kind of some quick thoughts and then feel free to add what you'd like. Um, I think it's important to know that Wilsonville does, uh, and has, uh, over the years, uh, done quite a bit, including, uh, to, in supportive ADUs, uh, we, where we're very strict in collecting SDCs for a lot of type of development, uh, and it's a critical way that we fund infrastructure, uh, ADUs is one that we have waived SDCs for, uh, and that's been a policy for a number of years now. And, uh, that we've enabled them to be divided through the middle housing land division and sold separately on its own lot, uh, as an affordable ownership opportunity. So those are two, uh, things that we've done, uh, and as mentioned, I think, I put in there is it, I think, a dozen, I believe, or so existing, is it seventeen, and the teens existing ADUs from the city. I'm not great at numbers remembering things tonight, so my apologies. Uh, there are some things too to consider, and just, uh, um, from recommendations that Eco Northwest brought forward, uh, and just I wanted to, and Becky can talk more on these, but some, just kind of from staff's perspective, a couple of things on here, uh, flexibility and exemption to lot coverage and/or setbacks for ADUs, uh, there's some important urban design considerations there, um, and just, we, we've talked, I've talked with a number of you before, that generally, uh, from an urban design perspective, people conceive setbacks a lot more than lot coverage. Lot coverage tends to not be, um, something that people really understand readily or saying, oh, that's why it, it works. So, I mean, from a staff's perspective, kind of, historically, we've been more open to exploring, uh, lot coverage reductions, where setbacks we want to be careful of because setbacks do definitely have a noticeable urban design, uh, component, but, uh, certainly more discussion and thoughtfulness that maybe we can do there. Uh, ADUs with townhouses regardless of lot size, uh, so we did, when we adopted middle housing, uh, we kind of kept status quo there, where, uh, we allowed, were townhouses, which we previously called attached single family, where they're essentially a single family on lots that are the same size as a single family lot in the zone, uh, they're, they're allowed, but if you have a smaller townhouse on a, on a, like, a twelve hundred fifty square foot lot, the ADUs aren't allowed. And certainly townhouses like the brownstones that were mentioned earlier in our conversation tonight, certainly provide opportunities, and just kind of the urban form of those buildings often acts where maybe you have a, a ground floor that's a garage and an ADU, then two floors of living above is, is a, is a fairly common, um, configuration of a townhouse. So certainly that may be a possibility, uh, to discuss, that would open up more possibilities for townhouses. Uh, larger ADUs provide more options for developers, that's something that we discussed about, uh, just, uh, beyond the memo, kind of looked at other jurisdictions, kind of the eight hundred, uh, is pretty consistent across jurisdictions that I've surveyed. Um, and, you know, going much above that, it doesn't really become an ADU anymore, there may be some possibility of kind of squaring it up to the size limitations on nine hundred square feet, which is for cottage clusters, uh, but those are just kind of some initial thoughts from a staff perspective, uh, on these potential changes to further encourage and allow ADUs. But, uh, Becky or others, anything to add? And then, uh, we can go have, uh, I think Commissioner Heberlein, uh, unless there's a desire for extensive discussion here, maybe if we can make this round robin fairly quick.
Chair, I think the only thing I would add on to that is just that we did hear, um, interest from developers who are likely to be, um, active in this area in, um, particularly in ADUs within a townhouse setting, so I think that one, um, the, the kind of brownstone setup that, um, the folks mentioned in Bilbois, there is some interest in, in doing something like that in this area from at least some developers, and so I think that's a, a change that particularly, um, aligns with some things we heard and, and would be, uh, likely to increase uptake and, and delivery of ADUs in this area.
So with that, uh, open, I'd turn it over to you, Commissioner Heberlein, uh, see what questions or thoughts, uh, the commission have, specific to ADUs in the memo that was presented.
Okay, great, uh, we'll, we'll start with Commissioner Carr this time.
Thank you, Chair. Um, the, the thing that I noticed, especially when I looked at Exhibit Three, is it seems like it's, it, the majority of this is, is not separate ownership, um, but it's supplemental income, uh, for homeowner, right? So it, it seemed like it was a very small percentage of, of, in the Portland area, they're being used or being sold separately. Is that what we would, with the developers that are interested in doing these ADUs within townhomes, is, is that their thought process as well, is it, it would be a homeowner that's then renting the ADU out, but still maintaining ownership?
What, what we've heard is that, um, at least the particular model of the developer who expressed an interest is, um, specifically a for sale, selling it as a condominium separately. Um, the, the survey information that we included, this is where, you know, a lot of, um, research and information about ADUs and focus on ADUs has been on homeowners building them in an infill setting, whether it's an existing home. And the motivations and the outcomes can be pretty different when that's how the ADU gets built, than if you have a home builder and they're building both the house and the ADU at the same time and then selling them. Um, so the, really the model, the motivation is, is different. I think to the extent the ADUs get built as, um, you know, part of the main property, sold with the main property, um, then the reason that somebody might buy an AD, a home with an ADU, that might align more with that survey. But not all of the ADUs that might get built in this area would necessarily be sold with the main home. We did hear specific, um, concerns about how that pushes the price point up for that home, if somebody has to be able to buy the home and the ADU, you're now hitting a price point that is, is pretty high, um, so that's sort of the trade-off there.
Okay. I think that was the only thing that popped off for me. I do like the idea of that as a mechanism of having some affordable housing, regardless, I guess, if it's separate ownership or ownership and rental. I think it would make it either a rental affordable or a unit affordable. But I appreciate the study, I think that, it's, it would be nice to see a survey of the developers and, and why they want to develop ADU as opposed to smaller units. Okay, but yeah, no, that's, concludes my thoughts.
All right, Commissioner Woods?
Yeah, you know, um, I, I guess my thought on, uh, ADUs is, uh, probably a little bit different than, uh, a number of the other commissioners. Uh, first off, you know, when I think about ADUs, and we look at Exhibit One and Two on page thirty-three, um, the vast majority, when we look at, uh, the top three reasons here is to have someone close by them, uh, but still you living separately, and then, uh, let's say you have someone elderly, or not even elderly, but someone that, um, needs a help with chores, you know, sixty-seven percent, uh, for having someone close by and sixty-four percent to help someone. So when I think about an ADU, of course, that's what I, I think about initially, but then, you know, the ideal, I do like the ideal though, of an individual, uh, being able to purchase a home, and at some juncture, while they have that home, be able to add an ADU, for whatever reason that may be, uh, elderly parent, uh, to take care of someone, just like, uh, Exhibit, uh, One and Two is showing. Uh, where I differ here is I'm still struggling, uh, with the idea of selling an ADU on a property. To me, that, it kind of really, um, can cause some problems, uh, as we've kind of heard earlier, in trying to understand how all of that would work. So, from the standpoint of, uh, ADUs, um, I do like them, uh, for the reasons I said earlier, uh, but, and also from a rental standpoint, um, but not from an ownership standpoint, uh, I don't think that's a, a good approach. Are we trying to do too much in this whole ADU space in expanding in order to achieve affordable living, uh, or housing for someone? Um, I'm, you know, I'm, I'm, I'm struggling with that piece, and I can't say that I, I really support that. Uh, but the whole ideal of, of having ADUs, I think it's, it's, it needs to be part of our housing mix, and, uh, I definitely support that. That's all I have to say on ADUs.
Thank you. Commissioner Willis?
Um, as a mother of two special needs kids that are young adults, um, I love ADUs, wish I had one, so I'm a fan, I'm supporting them, that's all.
All right. Commissioner Meddon?
Um, I, uh, I agree with including ADUs in the strategy that we're pursuing. Um, the ownership issue that Commissioner Woods brings up is an interesting one, um, and the difficulties that it would raise seem to me to be, uh, in the neighborhood. In other words, uh, if somebody decides that they're gonna subdivide, um, their neighbors may not like that. Um, I was trying to run through all the, kind of scenarios where that would happen, uh, wondering how often we're gonna see that, and in what cases we're gonna see that, and whether we're gonna see it mostly in cases where you have a large yard and, uh, um, it's time to have the flexibility to make that, uh, house on a large yard more sustainable by splitting the yard into having two, essentially two houses on it. And I haven't, it, it, I got kind of bogged down in that scenario, uh, run, and I don't have a good, uh, uh, firm kind of outcome yet. Um, so I, I understand where Commissioner Woods is, is coming from and, and raising that, that as an issue, I think we probably would be well off to look at what cases, uh, we're gonna have, have those subdivisions essentially happening. When it happens in a, um, townhouse, you know, like the report is showing, you know, I, it seems to me that that would be, uh, like condoizing an existing, uh, apartment building, so if it's, design-wise, if it works, uh, I, I don't know that, I have too much trouble with that, but when it comes to these single family, uh, residential units that then are gonna be, um, split into two, single family, I don't know how many of those we're gonna have to deal with. So it would be helpful to have, uh, cases where this is likely to happen or could be happening in Wilsonville. I don't want to be worrying about something that we will rarely see. The last, uh, uh, point that came to my mind as I was looking at this is, looking at Exhibit Three, more than half of the units, uh, ADU units are becoming rentals, and I think that, that is another affordable rental unit as far as I'm concerned. Um, whether somebody buys it from a developer or develops it afterwards, I think that is, that is good use of existing land and existing stock as we have. Um, I think it's going to deal with affordability and variety, having a mix of house. That's all my, my comments.
That's fine. Commissioner Tzuzinski?
Yeah, I guess for me, just, um, right off the bat, if, if they're gonna initially be sold as the smaller ADU with the bigger townhouse or property or whatever, um, it's hard for me to get my mind around calling them, you know, a, a house and the ADUs, especially if it's gonna be in more of a condo style ownership, um, I think I would like it more if they were just called condos, even if one of those is significantly smaller than the other. Um, additionally, my issue is if we have a property with an ADU that's being sold as one, one property, um, where you, you can rent it out, um, for additional income, that's great, but, um, I think people should maybe keep in mind that for lending purposes, uh, you can't really count a lot of that additional income on your loan, so, uh... So it, it's hard to, unless someone comes in with a lot of money, it's hard to lend on that. Maybe just keep that in mind for, for people that, I mean, if you have a family member, that's great. If it's a multifamily thing, even better, but just going forward, it's, if you're just using it purely as a rental ADU, it's really hard to get a loan based on that kind of additional income. So for me, I don't know if I like that going forward necessarily, but I guess for me personally, I would, I would talk to maybe some of the lenders that I know and see what their thoughts are. Maybe that's somebody we could have going forward, just, just for additional information.
Anything else?
That's it.
Okay, great. Um, you know, from my perspective, I am, I'm generally, I generally like the idea of ADUs as another tool in the toolbox. And up until we started talking about the brownstones, I really was struggling with figuring out a, a way that that would actually fit in Prop Pond East and South. Knowing that the majority of these lots are going to be smaller, I was having trouble visualizing how we would have a, what I would call the typical detached ADU on one of these lots. And, and so when I look at that, then it really comes back to the setbacks and I get nervous around the idea of reducing the setbacks because of the impact that that would have in the look and feel of the neighborhood, whether that's a front setback. And so for me, one thing I would want to see moving forward is what setbacks are we talking about relaxing? Because a front setback, if, you know, if we're just going, you know, reducing the front setback by half, that may be a pretty significant difference when you have maybe only one house on the block that has an ADU in the back. That to me would look very out of place. And so understanding that as we talk about it further would be really helpful for me. If it were just the idea of the brownstones and that was how we encouraged ADUs in these smaller lot developments, I could, I'm okay with that. That, that seems like a reasonable way to, to help facilitate that without being out of place in the, in the character of the neighborhood. All right, Mr. Polly. What do you want to do?
Looks like Commissioner Carter may have one more comment on ADUs before we move on.
Yeah, missed a hand, sorry. Go ahead.
Thank you, Chairman. So I just kind of wrapped a little bow around it in my head is you, you've got developers that want to build them if they're sold separately and we're not sure that's gonna fit the model of people that would be buying them. So are we gonna build a bunch of things, have a builder build a bunch of things that aren't sellable or aren't encouraged to be sold? So I, yeah, I'm, I'm struggling with ADUs a bit. I do like the idea of ADUs for family members, rental units, things of that nature, because it seems like that is a practical application. But if a builder's not gonna build them, does this become a moot topic?
We are going to do more outreach around this over the coming months. And yeah, so those are great questions.
I would, I would like to hear from, I would like to hear from builders that what, what would their propensity be to build it if they knew that it was gonna be sold as a rental unit? And then that goes back to the, to the comments of, I think it was Becky where she said, well then it becomes not affordable. The initial purchase is not affordable, the rental unit may be affordable. But yeah, there's more, more work I need there in my head.
Okay.
Thank you.
If nothing else, I, do we want to defer to the commission if they want to break at this point before talking about commercial stuff?
How long do you think commercial's gonna be?
I'd give it at least half hour at this point. It could be less, could be, but I mean.
Five minute break? Yeah, let's, let's adjourn for five minutes and we'll, we'll get back together at eight ten.
Go ahead and run with it, Commissioner, or Chair Heppeline?
Yeah, since I can't see Miranda waving, I'm not sure if the audio is up or not. So Miranda, let us know when the audio is up and we'll get started.
I just waved and so I was told that as soon as I waved, that the audio would come back on. So by the time I've said this, there we go, I've got my signal, the audio is, is live.
Perfect. Take the win, Mr. Polly.
All right. Well, thank you. And again, I appreciate the commission's patience with a longer, with a longer meeting tonight on this work session. I think it's been a great conversation and it's been really valuable. So thank you. So as mentioned, this is as in-depth feedback, this is kind of just an initial look, initial quick glance at the neighborhood commercial center evaluation. We'll get into it in more detail in a longer evaluation in April. But certainly this is something, you look back at the different iterations in the area plan, you kind of saw this red area moving around. So it's something that having a neighborhood commercial center as amenities can be an important gathering space and amenity and service, bring services to, and make a neighborhood more walkable and have a lot of benefits. But also need to look at the feasibility, what type of services is, how to build it, if it needs to be phased over time, a lot of questions to look at, and especially in, as we'll talk about in a retail market that's quite interesting right now, I guess we'll say. So, but with that, I really appreciate Chris and Sam of Leland Consulting. I, I remember the name and I apologize for my, for my forgetfulness earlier, but Chris and/or Sam, I'll go ahead and turn it over to you to talk through your initial presentation tonight.
Thanks, Daniel. So just be me for now. I think Chris has stepped away from it, still in childcare and please excuse me, I'm battling a raging cold this week, so I'm not at my best. So patience please. So just a quick overview of what I'm, I'm just gonna be talking about in hopefully not a half an hour, but a quick, quick breather and then we'll get into the questions. And just a quick refresher of the previous plan, and again, the commercial analysis that came along with that several years ago. We'll give you a quick overview of what we intend to analyze and just look at generally, and then we'll get into the questions. Hopefully we get some good feedback on, on our approach and anything else you wish to discuss next slide please. So if you're not familiar, back in 2015, the area plan framework map shown here identified a three and a half acre site for a commercial node. And so we suggested, and Leland suggested a location at the intersection of Beckman and Stafford Roads. That location, I should say, was never, there was never full consensus on that as a solid location for a commercial center. So part of this master planning project is going to further evaluate program and actually look at, you know, if there are alternative locations as well. So just thinking about what the vision for that, that commercial node was, and you know, one of the things we want to look at is, is whether that supplies, is a place that provides local goods and services within easy access local neighborhoods and has a high quality and pedestrian oriented, oriented design and serves as a gathering place. So I can skip through to the next couple, you can skip the next one. And on to the next. So just in terms of our evaluation as part of this new project, we intend to first review some of the existing market studies and market trends that are going to impact this commercial center. And a key piece of our work that we like to do is interview developers and brokers who can actually provide on the ground information about market potential, opportunities and constraints, and supplement and backcheck our analytical work. So part of the analytical component will be to refresh that analysis that was part of that 2015 plan. And that includes updating some information about supply and demand. And then determining any other community needs as well. One of the things that we'll look to do, the results of that will be a, some specific detail about tenant types, square footage, acreage, parking demands, et cetera, et cetera. So next slide please. Already Daniel said, you know, retail isn't an interesting place right now. We get that. We're not gonna go, I'm not gonna go into all of these, but I did want to quickly highlight just a couple of retail trends, some of which emerged since the last plan, some of which have been exacerbated, and you know, all of which can impact commercial prospects in Prop Pond. We all know about e-commerce growth and how COVID has disrupted retail in the last couple of years, but some of the most notable other trends that are kind of related, but in, in some ways separate from those are the growing demand for experience-based amenities in retail, walkability, convenience. And so we've seen the retail sector reacting to some of those trends by providing more diverse and compelling tenant mixes, looking at health-based retail that gets into some of the aging demographics and, and food and beverage as experience-based, as experiences. We're gonna be diving into these in greater detail, looking at details about advantages and disadvantages and how it impacts market potential for the Prop Pond area. Next slide. So when we talk about supply, what we're talking about is the landscape of existing or planned commercial properties in the market area. And part of our analysis will obviously be a review of what these commercial spaces are, how they can potentially compete with commercial space in Prop Pond. And so one investor that we think about is pretty apparent is Thor's Simple Town Center. We know that is set to undergo pretty significant change, all things going well, with reinvestment, you know, well into the future. So thinking about how this and others, other commercial centers in the market area interact with the future households in Prop Pond will be a point of discussion. And with that said, Prop Pond, as we currently understand, it may not compete with things that centers like the Town Center because it is, as it's currently envisioned, small and low-lease. Next slide please. On the demand side, we will look at the amount of spending by households, employees, visitors today and into the future as well. So a lot of pretty colors on this slide. Basically what I'm showing here is the customer base for both our Garp Square and the Town Center, Thor's Simple Town Center, others, which both include a broad array of retail tenants, including a larger format retail that will likely meet demand of a larger format re-commercial uses in the, in the broader area that encompasses Prop Pond. So, you know, commercial demand is gonna grow as part of a residential component of Prop Pond as it builds out, but as an edge location in a well-served, in an area well-served with, with larger commercial uses, we're likely to see that, that continued need and focus on smaller format neighborhood retail. So part of the 2015 plan did include some case studies on neighborhood retail nodes and that actually impacted some thinking on, you know, the potential program which looked at that three and a half, three and a half acre site. And it helped us reconfigure it and rightsize it to about thirty-eight thousand square foot retail node with, with commercial services and whatnot. But we looked at five different retail nodes as part of that project and the only reason I highlight these are basically, you know, there's, there's five we can refresh, but there are also others. And, you know, these are pretty important in, in showing, showing us some of the ways and strategies that we can think about. and strategies that we can think about neighborhood retail. So next slide, you know, another one that comes to mind, thinking, you know, about the program elements that have already been considered in the front pond area. You know, this is pretty close to that three and a half acre, pretty close to 38,000 square feet, and you know, an unanchored freestanding commercial building, this is kind of what back apply, tenants including restaurants, healthcare, fitness, et cetera, et cetera. And, you know, on the next slide, there's, you know, it's a well and good showing successful retail nodes and how those are developed, but also, you know, I think it's important sometimes to look at others that haven't built out and understand the reasons why. So we'll look at some of these things, and this is which had one in Hillsborough from 2004 plan and envisioned a neighborhood center surrounded by all this, it's pretty comparable in size to the front pond area, thinking about a five acre retail node, and it hasn't developed out for whatever reason, so you know, these are some of the things that we can look at. And that's all I've got to present, and so we'll move into questions here now.
All right, so thank you, thank you, Sam, and I know how you feel, so thanks. So let's go ahead and go through these questions, and again, maybe Chair Everline, if you want to, just if we want to do a quick round robin, just some initial thoughts, I don't think the Commissioners have to answer all of these, but just any initial thoughts that come to their mind about kind of what they're envisioning for this evaluation, and you know, how, what should we look at differently than we looked at in 2015, and any ideas about location or any other kind of guidance that you would give the team as we jump into this?
Next, Dan, Commissioner Tuzinski.
Sure, I'm not sure that the overall vision for the commercial area has necessarily changed in 2015. I do like the location, I think not only will it serve the Frog Pond area in general, but the people that use those two main roads for commuting, it's a great, you know, if you need to stop, if you take Stafford Road to work and you need to stop for some milk on the way home, you can pop in, and it's easy to get in and out, and even if you live in that area, it's also right on the way in and out, so I do like the location. And I also like the size so far what's presented of the retail, I don't think any necessarily big stores need to go into that space, especially if that's kind of the area we're looking at. To me, the ideal would be some coffee, like a coffee shop, maybe a little market, you know, I'm sure there'll probably be a nail salon or whatever, but yeah, that kind of just intended for the people that live there, smaller retail location would be ideal to me, so that's it for me.
Great, Commissioner Medoff.
I'm good with the location, I'm good with the size. I think this will work well to serve the neighborhood, and it's got exposure enough, but still be helped by traffic, and it probably will need it.
Okay, Commissioner Willard.
Um, yeah, I don't know that I have anything to add, I think the location seems sensible and the size, I like the sensing that's being done on the trends and experience-based, I think, I think your further evaluation of that will be, sure, you're right, actually.
Next, Mayor Wood.
I have a fundamental question, going back to the retail trends and shifting, what is click and collect? I'm not familiar with that term.
I didn't explain that very much, like, click and collect is related to e-commerce, but it's essentially where you are just buying something online and picking off the store.
Oh, that's what I thought.
Hybrid, hybrid version.
Understand. But someone, someone who lives very close to this intersection and passes by it quite often, one of the first questions I have when this is built out, and I'm thinking down the road here, I'm thinking about traffic on this corner, so I'm wondering how will the expected traffic be handled, how will this corner change, so that, you know, people going in and out, it seems to me like if it's not planned very well, that we could have some issues with traffic congestion there. And then the second question I have is how will this fit with the expected, you know, housing that we're looking in the Frog Pond East arena there?
I think overall, go ahead, Sam.
Your second question hit on something that we were curious about internal here, and you know, there are a couple of strategies that we can kind of think about from a housing perspective, and you know, the way we like to, we always, we like to look at retail strategies flexibly, so they can evolve with how an area builds out and the trends that pop up, you know, you never know what's coming up around the corner, let alone 20 years from now. But if there are, if there is, for example, a kind of a buffer zone surrounding that retail node with some slightly higher density residential, for example, you know, you can kind of think about that flexibly as, you know, if needed at some point in the future, you know, the existing retail node, the concentration of retail could actually evolve and kind of move out into that high-density residential as a kind of mixed-use ground floor commercial. So you know, it's one way we would think about how it might interact with surrounding housing units, but I think fundamentally, just thinking about consumer spending and the likely tenants, and consumer spending habits from those tenants of any future residential, you know, that's going to be pretty important to our analysis. So, you know, those are going to be the primary, that's going to be the primary source of revenue for future retail tenants, so you know, it's pretty important we have to.
Yeah. What about the traffic, though? That's a concern. Have you guys thought about that?
Well, we do have, you know, I will say, I preface it with, you know, we're not traffic engineers, and nor are we site designers, you know, we're market analysts and some research strategists, but you know, we do have, you know, recommendations and expertise in sort of how a site might build out, you know, to accommodate likely traffic, and then, you know, as we sort of get into the nitty-gritty down the line, I don't think we're going to do that as part of this project, but as a later phase, you know, we would consider, you know, what size, what side of the street is accommodating to, you know, in commuters, out commuters, you know, are people, you know, more likely to go into a store on their way home, is that on the, should that be on the right side of the street or the left? You know, what are the access configurations, how far away from the intersection, parking configurations, all of that kind of stuff, so I kind of don't have an answer to you now, but I will say that, you know, that's all, that's all.
I just want to say that's a very important consideration, because remember, we have a school just up the road there on Advance, and you know, thinking ahead, those are things that we need to really be looking at. The other question I have is, you know, I noticed the example was a multi-level, one of them was a multi-level example, is that what we're thinking about, a multi-level structure or just a one-level structure? And the reason I ask that is, when I think about the town center and what we looked at there, you know, with retail on the bottom, housing up top, or in this case, maybe office space, what are we considering for this commercial area?
I can start there, Sam, and first of all, I wanted to follow up Commissioner Woods on the previous question. Certainly, there's some, the intersection, the side of the intersection that's, the access, the access spacing on the arterial is quite a ways back, so likely a lot of access would have to even potentially come off a local street rather than directly off those main arterials, so certainly access and kind of that circulation depending on time of day are important considerations, and the traffic team will look at this as part of that analysis, and there's definitely spacing standards and a lot of things in place to make sure there's not adding congestion to wherever, undoing to wherever we're putting it. In terms of the mix of uses, there was specific direction in the area plan to look at mixed use residential with retail, so we'll talk about kind of similar, the feasibility of that, if really is doable, if it makes sense in this context, and I think we, the area plan didn't get as much detail besides saying, hey, that's something maybe we should look at, but I think we're going to get a lot more information through this evaluation, whether or not that's a good idea or feasible in this context.
Thank you. All right, Commissioner Carr.
Thank you, Chair. So hit on a bunch of points that I had, I think proximity to the school and potential foot traffic needs to be considered when we, when we talk about location. I, along with Commissioner Woods, am concerned about traffic based on where it's located, I think that's the, you know, as you talked about, that's the main intersection right there, and if we have to go into arterial roads, then now you're having people drive into a neighborhood, right? Now you've got more kids that they're, they're having to avoid, I guess is one way to say it, right? Because you're now pushing, if they're not making the turn off of that primary corner, now you're pushing them closer to the, to the middle school and what will be a grade school to go, to access it, so concern there. I wrote down kind of what, what Sam was talking about, you know, if you could have ground floor shops and commercial and then housing units above, I think that also goes with what Daniel was saying. And then even with that multi-floor structure, what Chair Everline said earlier, that we don't want multifamily potential apartments to kind of stick out like a sore thumb, so do we have commercial buildings, multiple stories, that then transition to maybe multifamily housing units, multiple story, and then transfer out that way? So we could, in essence, almost create a ring around the commercial that's multifamily potentially. That kind of matches the one where it was, the commercial buildings were in the middle and they were surrounded by multi-floor condos, that was one of the examples given. And then I just happen to know the Westlake Center, I think I've gone through there several times personally, and it's things like gift shops, dry cleaners, massage shalons, wine bar and jewelry stores, so you know, is that, is that what's going to fit, or is it going to be like some type of food? Again, proximity to school might, might alter what kind of goes in there, but I like, I like the idea of having commercial, I think it is far enough away from Town Center that it probably won't influence that. I do like the locate, the general location here in Frog Pond, because you can get those people leaving that are driving out Stafford Road to go home, since we still have, you know, half our population in Wilsonville leaves to go to their job, and half of the, half of the people commute into, or more than that, commute into work here, so as they're leaving work, they can stop by and get something on their way out of town, and that will potentially reduce the confusion that we have around Town Center and that area. So I kind of like the general idea of, of commercial in, in the Frog Pond area, so I think those are all my random spatterings of words. Yes, that's all I have written down.
Great. From my perspective, in general, I'm in favor of this location, I think it's the right place when it comes to citing commercial to get, you know, closest to the largest number of people, any farther north on Stafford or any farther east on Advance, then you're just getting farther away from the population center, and I don't think that that makes sense overall. One thing that I think is going to be important is making sure that, that we work with SMART to, to make sure that we get the transit stop aligned as closely as possible to the commercial development. I know right now, it's very close to the middle school, so maybe there's something to consider there in terms of relocating the transit stop to allow, to support both the school and the commercial node. Making it more convenient for people to get there is only going to help with, you know, increasing the possibility of the commercial node being viable. And then the last thing, I think moving forward, you know, I like the, I like showing the examples of other retail nodes. One thing that I would like to see when we, when we see examples of other retail nodes moving forward is making sure that they are as closely aligned to the amount of traffic that this area would see, so that we can understand what is viable based on the expected amount of traffic that we're going to see through this area. Because if those areas are seeing, you know, three times the amount of traffic, well, maybe that has a significant impact on viability of the development, so I just want to make sure that what we're looking at is as close to an apples-to-apples comparison as we can get.
Also the rooftops.
Yes.
Within, within its circle of gravity.
Yep, yeah, good point, and income likely as well would be another consideration to look at. That's it for me, anything else from the Commissioners?
Where are some of these examples? I know Forest Heights is in Cedar Mills, where is Lake Brook Shopping Center?
Lake Costiego.
Is it?
Pretty sure.
Okay. And North West Crossing, everyone? And there? And, and Westlake?
Lake Costiego also, it's about two blocks north of Cruzway.
All right. And Irvington Corner?
Irvington, that would be Portland, yeah. Yeah, Portland, Irvington neighborhood of Portland, I don't know exactly where it is.
All right, thank you.
Okay, Dan, looks like we've got the feedback from the Commissioners, does that cover what you're looking for tonight?
I think that was very helpful, and I really appreciate Commissioners being through that discussion, and just wanted to share a couple other quick things, Joe, I'll give it over to you, and share a couple other quick updates.
We're making maps, revisiting and updating our existing conditions work, making a, what's called a buildable land inventory, where we met out constrained lands to see how much our land base is, and then the image on this slide, we've just completed the fieldwork and draft memo for an arborist report, mapping the trees and assigning priorities to their condition and health, so that'll be good info that we will marry up with the housing and commercial information that we've talked about so far. We're doing. We're doing.
Thanks, and I'd also add in that particularly going into March, uh prior to our next work session, we'll be getting into doing uh focus groups and continuing our outreach as well. So uh so we'll have more to share about what we're learning there uh when we in April as well. So I don't know if you have anything else to add about outreach, Joe, um that the commissioner might find interesting?
We're designing the specifics of it now, so need to to come back really with that. Uh but we're we're thinking that the uh, my my thinking is that the the April discussion is a good launch point uh for the kind of collaborative outreach that we've talked about today. So um you know, outreach is ongoing, but the the very active kind of um design-oriented meetings and so on uh will be following the commission's discussion in April.
Commissioner Carr, you had a question?
Yes, thank you, Chair. I was just, I thought I heard earlier that the urban growth boundary had been expanded to include this land, but your chart shows just the school area being in the UGP. This, am I in, has it been included in the urban growth boundary now?
It's still draft, yeah, that's an old line.
Okay.
It's a, it's an old line, yeah.
That's all I need, I was just gonna.
Good eye, Commissioner Carr, yes, yeah. All right, that's that's all I have, thank you for your time.
Great, thank you, uh thank you, Mr. Polly, thank you city staff and and to all the consultants. Um another excellent job, um and look forward to uh seeing what you guys can put together next.
Thank you.
Okay, last thing, we've got some informational items, uh City Council Action Minutes. Uh Ms. Bachel, anything uh of note to um provide to the council or to uh to the commission?
Uh I do not have um anything specific on the council um agenda items unless there's questions. I will note though, um briefly, because you'll see that the Aurora Airport um comprehensive plan policies discussion went to them after it went to you all. Um and I just wanted to provide a brief update because that item will be coming back to the planning commission in April. That will be after we do some research or um outreach, excuse me. Uh we um have an initial list of um policy areas, uh potential issue areas, and we're really just gonna be doing um a free survey online through Let's Talk Wilsonville to gather input from the community, just in terms of how they use the airport or not, um what potential concerns or areas of concerns they may have, interests they may have, um how they interface with the airport or do not interface with it, getting some initial information from the community to just track like the the different areas in which we should be thinking about policy. We'll also be having two community um conversations or um virtual open houses, so to speak, um following our recent kind of formats and venues for that. Those will be scheduled in March. Um we're in the process right now of putting that information out into the Boon Ferry Messenger and getting all of that up online, um and launching our Let's Talk Wilsonville page. So those will occur on March ninth and March tenth. The survey will be open for almost four weeks, um bridging late February, early March. Um and then uh coupled with that, we're doing a number of stakeholder interviews based on the information that we, um the input that we received from both planning commission and city council last month. So all that information will be used to help the project team to then craft um a draft outline or a draft policies to bring back to you in April. So since you thought, since you provided input on the public outreach component, um I just wanted to touch base and let you know that we are working on that and that's what stands.
Okay, um any questions from the commissioners uh related to the council minutes? I'm not seeing anything. Okay, so last on the agenda is just the uh the work schedule. Um so I see that uh that March looks fairly light, just a informational session on the uh on the Beckman Road corridor overview?
Yeah, I mean, that could be a meaty topic, we'll see. It's a big project, it's a project that interfaces with Frog Pond and Frog Pond Master Planning, um and so engineering is prepared to come and give you an update that, update on that and answer any questions you have. Um as you know, we are very busy around here and so I'm hesitant at this point to push them and to um possibly cancel your meeting and to commit to that, just because we have other agenda items that may actually come together for March, um we're just not sure. So I will, stay tuned, um we may have a short meeting, which would be nice for you for a change, because April is looking like another long one.
Right, and I, that's what I was looking at and wondering if there was anything that could bleed fro, that could slide from April into March, you know, if if the informational session on the I five bike ped bridge, you know, could could be brought up so that we don't have such a heavy meeting on in April?
We are trying our best.
Okay.
So yes, that is the idea. As you know, I prefer to try to do that for you all when I, as much as I can.
Yes, fantastic, if we can make that happen. Okay. All right, thank you.
Well, I think we're wrapped up, so I think that I will move that we adjourn.
Second.
All right, we have a a motion and a second, and I'm pretty sure that I can say as of eight forty-six, we are adjourned.
Congratulations on your first chairing, Commissioner Everline.
Nice job, nice job, Brad.
Thank you.